At six o'clock, if you'll rise for the pledge and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Bosio.
Let's pray. Lord, we're grateful for this special time. And, Lord, it's not just a convening of a meeting of leaders and citizens, but, Lord, it's really something special. It's an opportunity for a new day, a new direction. Lord, we're praying over some whose assignments are complete and others whose assignments are beginning, but, Lord, we never finish anything until you call us home. So, we pray blessing upon those who are here, those who are serving, have served, and, Lord, may they know that the work that they've done is forever sealed in heaven. And we thank you. Amen.
Thank you very much. Michael, if you'll take the roll call, please.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Pro Tem Lally.
Here.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 13 meeting?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That has been approved. Now, we have the city clerk.
All right. If you remember last Monday, and no, it wasn't my fault. Our results were down there in time, so those of you who blamed the clerk's office, thank you, but do a little more research next time. We did get the results. They were certified by the Wayne County Board of Canvassers, and I shall read the numbers aloud. The Board of Canvassers of the Charter County of Wayne, having ascertained and canvassed the votes of said City of Allen Park at the general election held on the seventh day of November 2023, do hereby certify and determine that Gail McLeod, having received a sufficient number of votes, is elected candidate for the office of mayor for your term; that Michael I Mizzi, having received a sufficient number of votes, is elected candidate for the office of city clerk; and that Frank Liberati, having received a sufficient number of votes, is elected candidate for the office of treasurer for your position; and having received the sufficient number of votes, the following candidates are elected to the office of city council for a four-year term: Gerald Barr Jr., Timothy S. Timer, Nancy Nick, Dennis Marcos, Gary Schleck, and Matthew E. Valerius. These are the results as they were canvassed and certified by the Wayne County Board of Canvassers. This is what's presented before you to recognize and file. So, I entertain a motion, Mayor.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, Michael. Now, we come to final comments from our officials this evening, and we will start with Mr. Marcos.
Hi. For our final comments, it's tough. It's been an interesting two years. I had a real great privilege of working with some really, really good people here on the city council. We've always seemed to be able to work out any indifferences, any problems easily without any yelling or screaming, any hard feelings about anything. I really appreciate everything that they've done, all the department heads, what they've done, helped me, teach me about what's going on in the city, how to pay attention to things, and the mayor for her guidance on the last few years. But as far as the current council, thank all of you very, very much for all your assistance, all your help. Good night.
Mr. Blevins.
So, it's been a fun four years, a good learning experience. We've been through a lot in the last four years. There's so much I can say. I want to thank all the city workers, volunteers. I want to thank the city council for all the respect. I want to thank our mayor for always, every year, recognizing Pride Month. I want to thank... There's a couple individuals that I want to recognize that really pushed me to run a second time, one being Linda Shorvac, and then also someone that has been by my side throughout was going to be now Councilwoman Nancy Nick. Through the ups and downs, it's been a wonderful experience. I want to say great job to the city in Parks and Recs and the cities on the Christmas parade that happened last Friday. Also, make sure to the residents, please make sure you donate at the fire station, Toys for Tots. They're collecting toys. Please always, as I always say, support local businesses so that they can stay here in Allen Park. A lot of people, they always... With residents, sometimes they complain about these little things, and I can't say enough how wonderful Allen Park is. That's why I always say stay positive. Because when I go, when you drive to a different city, sometimes their roads aren't getting fixed, or I'm so glad this council we approved to have are recycling every week instead of every other week. Since we got the new garbage cans, there's not just random garbage bags just flying everywhere in the city. I think, personally think that it has helped with somewhat the rat issue and all. I know, again, there's always, will always be rats and all, but it's an improvement kind of thing. I am so glad to see that we did get a new DPS building because from where they were working at to now, there are so many things, again, like I said, I've always wanted the digital sign to have better communication. I'm glad that the library, we got that taken care of over 12 years of talk. I just, again, I just want to say that it's just been an honor to serve up here for the last four years. And as some people, again, it's the finish line for my term, and it's, I will do my best to still try to be involved. Some people have, there's, again, rumors of why not re-running, but mostly, I just need to take care of myself at the moment. And November is also Diabetes Awareness Month. As a diabetic, please make sure you take care of yourself and check the blood sugars. It's, it is a serious thing. But, again, I can go on and on, and I can, it's like, I can make this meeting go on and on and on, but I think, you know, I know that my advice to the next council is think of the residents always when you go and vote on something. Don't make it a personal agenda. Make it, you're doing this for the city. Congrats to the new council. Congrats to Tim, Nancy, and Gerald. As I always say, if you're not 100% on something, you don't have to vote yes. Believe in what is right for the city. And then also, no matter what, I will always say that Mayor Pro Tem Lally and Councilman Dan Lloyd, they'll always be winners to me. Everyone that stepped up to make a difference to the city is all winners, whether you volunteer or you represent. You can talk and talk, but if you step up, at least you tried. So, with that, I hope everyone has a wonderful year, a wonderful Thanksgiving. Be thankful every day. And God bless. Stay positive. And I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say deeply humbled and grateful for the trust I've had for the last four years. Quite the last four years, we had a lot of ups and downs, and the one thing I'm going to be, I'm going to miss is that I've got a chance to serve with some great people. Some I got to serve with for long periods of time, others not so much, notably Councilman Lloyd, Councilman Blevins, Councilman Lally, Treasurer Murray Armstrong. But I definitely had the closest connection I made with Dan, particularly during our shared meetings with Legal Affairs. Oftentimes, we would argue just unique details of individual words that we wanted to fit in, go back and forth. That was a lot of fun, going back and forth and sharing how our personal experience really shaped what we want to do best for the city. Dan will be missed, and I'm sure his journey's not done. Maybe right now it's paused, but I know he'll back up here if that's what he wants or somewhere beyond. I know, I got to know him as a, not just a councilman, but as a friend, and I got to see him as a father and a husband, and I'm definitely going to keep contact for sure. Another is Charles. You know, he's a wealth of knowledge, a walk-in encyclopedia of Allen Park knowledge. Fashion, I think we could all agree, and no one can help do Charles on his fashion, his bow ties. You know, always inspires us to do positive things on his council, and I know that's what we're up here for, and that's what I hope that we can continue to do. Their contributions that they made in this council this four years are just second to none, and their absence will definitely be felt. Things we've talked about, things we discussed personal, or rather, it was something to do with Allen Park. A lot of hard, long hours working together, but I know that's what the work does, and that's what matters, to do what's best for our city. So, thank you for your service. Thank you for being damn great Allen Parkers, and I know you're going to continue doing so. So, that I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Valerius.
I just wanted, I usually like to speak just from the heart, but there's a lot of things I wanted to say tonight, so I kind of wrote some things down. So, first, I want to start by just saying, you know, what an honor it's been to serve these last four years on council with everyone up here. Back in 2015, I picked up the paperwork to run, thought about it. I think I got one signature and then said, you know, what the heck am I thinking? What am I doing? And I decided not to run. And then 2019, I kind of followed through with it and was blessed to earn a seat up here with all of you. In these four years, we faced many challenges. The untimely and sorrowful passings of two council members, Bob Stites and Pamela Syke, left us both saddened and determined to honor their memories and their willingness to serve the city they loved. And that brought in the additions of Charles and Dennis, who were welcomed, and their presence and desire to serve was both evident and greatly appreciated. How they came to sit up here, not nearly as important, is how they accepted their responsibility and how they represented themselves in the City of Allen Park. And I thank you for that. Being on council, to me, means more than wearing a fancy name badge or having my name on plaques and signs. I didn't run in 2019 for name or public recognition, and I did not run for reelection with those attributes in mind. My family and I have called Allen Park home for 23 years, and I care about the city and community. I plan to do, continue to do, everything I can these next four years so that you will not question that vote and that I will continue to earn your trust. Part of being on council involves being responsible for decisions we make, whether they're popular or not. The public views us and judges us for our actions, and we must maintain strong moral and ethical values always. How can we ask the citizens we represent to practice what we preach while not being held to a higher standard as an elected official of the city? The answer is, we cannot. Charles, I'll try my best to continue promoting the positivity that you have so well represented during your time on council. Know it was a tough personal decision for you to not run for reelection, but your time up here, as well as the countless hours that you have dedicated to the City of Allen Park, has not gone unnoticed, and I personally thank you for your service, but more importantly, your friendship. Thank you. Tony, your service to the City of Allen Park and our country goes without question. It's been an honor to serve with you and share in the work being done to improve the City of Allen Park. You do so much for the citizens of this city that I am sure that most people are totally unaware of all that you do. You do these things because you care. Care about the people you service, and you care about this city. I thank you for your service and dedication to Allen Park and to our country. I'm most thankful for our friendship, and although I'm not a wine drinker, maybe I should consider expanding my palate so we can share a glass of vino from time to time. Oh, Dan, what can I say? You are the only council member that citizens never complained about not hearing through our microphones. Seriously, your voice may be loud, but most importantly, the words and meaning behind them is what resonates. You are a shining example to your students and to anyone who takes five minutes to talk to you. The passion you have for local government and its importance in our society is inspirational. As a fellow teacher, I'd be honored to sign student forms who come to these meetings, as I have been blessed to witness you do the same things for these past four years. Continue to do what you do because what you do is both meaningful and important. I'm very proud of you. I believe that most of the citizens of Allen Park are proud of you. I know they are. I'm confident that your family is proud of you, and I know that your dad is proud of you. You most definitely deserve a seat up here. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
First off, thank you, guys. I genuinely appreciate the relationships that I've built up here, not just as my fellow councilpeople, but as my friends. Tony, I highly recommend the Tony's wine, by the way, especially drinking in the back of the garage. Yeah. I've said this quote a few times since the election. In 2008, after John McCain lost to Barack Obama, told reporters that he slept like a baby, got up every two hours crying. And Tuesday night, I really felt that. I genuinely felt that despair. And, yes, it was partly despair of the loss, you know. I am a competitive person. I like to win, but it was the despair of letting down my supporters, my colleagues, and the city. I ran for council because I genuinely felt like I had a voice up here that was important, that needed to be done, and I let a lot of people down. After some conversations, some friends, and some colleagues, some wise advice, I understand that that is a misguided feeling. I know that the work that we did up here was valuable, and as Charles mentioned, you know, I put my name in the hat, I ran, and I had 1,600 individuals showed up. They wrote down my name, and they filled in a bubble. I was out running the Saturday after the election, and I had one of my former students, he was at, had him at the community school, and he was struggled academically. It wasn't his strong suit, but he shouted out his window at me and said, "Hey, Lloyd, I voted for you." So, for that kid, most likely the first time that he ever went to a ballot box, he went into the booth, and he wrote down his teacher's name, and he filled in the bubble. And since then, I've had a number of conversations with former students that the first time that they voted, the first time that they voted, it wasn't for a presidential election or senate or congressional. They went in an off year, and they went and they voted for their teacher for student council. I've talked up here for the last four years about the importance of democracy and community and service, and I've said over and over again that the class that my dad designed was called Impact on Government because the biggest impact that you can have on government is at the local level, and the biggest impact on your life is by that local government. And because of that, I am incredibly proud. I'm incredibly proud that those young people, that they got involved in their city politics. In a few short minutes, I will no longer have the title of city councilperson. However, I will still very much have the title of citizen. And if losing an election was enough to make it so that I was no longer going to come and advocate for the things that I believed in, or to speak up when I think that something is right or wrong, then all of those things that I had said the last four years about service, about community, about democracy would be hollow. How I greatly appreciate have you've done in the past, collecting those agendas for me, I've already made the promise to Councilman Marcos, I'm still going to be doing it. And I'm not going to have the council comments at the end, but I promise that I'm still going to speak up for the things that I think that are right. It has truly been an honor, spending the last four years, serving with these individuals, with Mr. Kibbe, City Attorney Mr. Kovir, Mayor McLeod, all of our department heads, and I am truly appreciative of what we have in place and what I am handing over to the next council. And I know very much that that work is not done, and I, the council that is coming in here has my absolute support as they face those challenges and how they're addressing what we need to do to continue to make this a great place to live, to work, to live, to raise your family. Thank you all so much for your support. Thank you all so much for your kind words. Thank you and good night.
Mr. Lally.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Matt Valerius for his comments. Thank you, Dan. It's been a pleasure. Matthew, Charles, I was afraid, and all the councilpeople, the mayor, the city administrator, the lawyer, Joe, over here. I want to thank all the citizens of this great City of Allen Park for the following, allowing me to serve on this council for the past four years. It has been my honor and pleasure. I am extremely grateful for the incredible support I have received throughout this campaign journey. Thank you to all the dedicated volunteers, unwavering supporters, cherished friends, fellow city workers, every department who have been by my side, as well as the mayor and council members I have had the privilege to work with and honor. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my entire family, especially my wife Maria, whose love and understanding and unwavering support has sustained me through it all. I owe you the deepest gratitude. Your commitment has been the backbone of this campaign. Together, we not only ran a clean campaign, we have built a community of support and shared dreams. Thank you for believing in me and for being the driving force behind this incredible journey. I will continue to support and do my very best to move this city that I love forward whenever I am called up on to help. My life has been dedicated for serving others, and I will continue to do so. Good night. God bless. God bless the USA. I wish all the best of luck to all the new council and administrator. Happy Thanksgiving and a safe Merry Christmas to all of you.
Mike, would you like to say anything at this point?
Just real quick, Councilman Blevins, it's going to be sad to see you go. You've been around probably the longest, that, like, it's fountain of knowledge. Charles couldn't always say what he was thinking, but believe me, what he was thinking was filled with so much background and knowledge. It was amazing. It's just what he has retained about Allen Park, someone like that just loves this city, and that's what Charles does. He loves this city. I'm not going to say goodbye because you're just too young. I'll see you around, Charles. I'll see you around. Dan, your father is the one who really gave me a lot of my courage to speak up during certain situations in the city, when a lot of people were coming down on me and they were politically attacking me. It was your father who would call me and say, "Just keep doing the right thing, Mike. Keep your head up." And I would tell him so much information that I probably shouldn't have, but he knew to keep it tight and just I needed to vent, and your father, as you are two great Allen Park citizens. And I don't know many people who, well, I do know a lot of people who know your grandmother, Rose Lloyd. One of the number one comments I heard about her is the lady who built Lindeman brick by brick. So, to have that type of connection to the community and to the people, I mean, it's just unbelievable. Again, I'm not saying goodbye to you at all. You're too young. You're too entrenched. You may move out, but I'll put my dime and dollar. You'll move back in and die, okay? I could say so much more, but I want to touch on Tony Lally. It's been a pleasure. We served at a rough time on a previous council. I can honestly say I see your heart really is in the right place, and God bless you for that. It's never easy to sit up here for any of you. I've seen many come and go, and I'm not downplaying you, but the best ones were the ones that made lemonade out of lemons. You guys got elected during COVID. Two members passed away. I don't, it's been crazy, but you just kept going. I mean, our fund balance is as healthy as it has been in well over a decade. You did a great job. You did a great job, okay, because that's, as taxpayers and citizens, your number one job is fiduciaries to them. Well done, you did your job. I've seen councils in the past, you guys have, I believe, four million in the reserves, budget contingencies, I watched them come in there and leave four million in the hole, okay? You guys did it right, congratulations, thank you, and please, everybody up here, stick around. God bless you.
Thank you, Mike. I didn't prepare anything, I've had some things running around in my mind, kind of piggybacking on comments that Mike made. We all came into this brand new, we had a lot of things that we had to deal with. My position has, my feeling has been that, I may be the mayor, but I am the team captain, and this is a team, and everybody works together, and like a baseball team, everybody has different talents, they have, they play different positions, and everyone brought something different to the table, and we all blended together and worked together. And I can't begin to tell you the appreciation I have for everything that each individual brought to this table. I am going to miss Charles a great deal, but I know that I can always contact him. He, his knowledge is impeccable, and get him in a one-on-one conversation, and you will have a full realization of what a fountain of information this young man is. Tony, if you, if Tony came to me and said, you know, they did this right, he would go and check out construction, something that DTE did, when this man came back and said, they did an excellent job, I knew they did an excellent job because Tony knew what he was talking about, he knew what he was looking at. And again, his time in this community and what he's done for this community, very much appreciated. Dan, you're breaking my heart. Dan is my rock, but again, like Charles, I know where he lives, and I've got his number, and I can contact him, but I would sit here so many nights in awe, listening and learning, because that's the other thing, that one should never stop learning, and you learn from your peers, you learn from your elders, and you learn from the youngsters coming I am very glad to have the returnees, looking forward to more poems from Matt and complaints about warm weather. Gary's knowledge of government is a boon to us, and Dennis, with his experience and background and his analytics, he will continue to do well for the community. I will repeat what I said on election night, that I continue to be very humbled and grateful to the residents. I take this position very seriously. The faith that you have shown in me, I will not let you down, and I will continue to live by the poster in my office that says, power and money don't change you, they reveal you. And thus far, I am very happy to say that it has not revealed anything that I would not want to have revealed. Thank you all very much. I asked for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Blevins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this meeting is adjourned at 6:35.